The Board of Alderman for Tuesday, September the 16th. The first thing that we are going to do is adopt our agenda and y'all get your pencils out because I've got quite a few additions to this agenda. Let's start with additions to the consent agenda. If you'll add at 3C10, permission to hire a CFO. At 3C11, approval of transfers from Building and Grounds to Facilities Maintenance and Landscape Management to form our two new departments that will begin October 1st. Those transfers also include two employees from Environmental Services that will be transferred. And then 3C12 is approval to hire a municipal deputy court clerk. So that's it for consent. If you will add at 4A1, presentation of the Medal of Valor. At 4A2, presentation of a Gold Line Award. At 4C, permission to accept the bid proposal for general liability insurance of $589,409. That is for out transportation. Donna Zampella is here for that. If you will add at 7D, permission to enter into a contract with Industrial Frago USA, Inc. for a temporary ice skating rink at Holly Jolly Holidays. And at 8K, permission to seek two appraisals for an easement needed to make necessary improvements to the Howell Lift Station. Did I get them all?
I think that's it.
Okay. Any other? Do you have one? Okay. Let's add that. At 8L. All right. Any other department heads that I missed? All right. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda with those lengthy changes?
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Any opposed? I want to start by correcting a statement that I made at one of our board meetings two weeks ago. I incorrectly identified a person in our audience who disrupted our meeting and identified that person as Kate Kellum. It was not Kate Kellum. It was another person and I've apologized to Kate and I wanted to clear that up publicly that it was not Kate Kellum that disrupted our meeting. Most everybody in Oxford already knows that we have the most amazing team at Visit Oxford. And now it's cool to know that people outside of Oxford also know that. I wanted to point out that Visit Oxford won several prestigious awards at the Southeast Tourism Society Conference recently. Visit Oxford won Best Digital Marketing Campaign and Double Decker Arts Festival was named Best Event in the Southeast. And those are really huge awards when you consider who the competition is across the Southeast, when you compare the size of our staff and budget and community to the larger markets in the Southeast. That's very impressive and so thank you to our Visit Oxford staff for all you do for us. We have a full house tonight and one of the groups that we have in the audience tonight is an impressive group called Project Lead. We have an employee leadership program. We have just started our third class of Project Lead participants. And so, and we have many of our graduates with us tonight as well. So if you are a participant that has already participated in Project Lead or are in the current class, would you stand please? These folks represent the future of Oxford. We've had a football game and several more to come in a row. So OPD is having to drink Red Bulls and be ready for the next one. But we've had great success and huge crowds and safe weekends and so we pray that those continue. I met last week via Zoom with a new SEC Mayor's Alliance. And so it's the mayor from every SEC town and I'm really excited about the potential that this group has to strengthen our communities and elevate our collective voices of our SEC cities. We are already getting questions about Halloween and when Halloween will be. Halloween will be October the 31st. That's what Halloween is. And so as we've done for many years, we get lots of questions. We'll get many more that week based on whether it's supposed to rain or not. And it is on a Friday of a home football game. So we suspect, as happens in many years, that homeowners associations, neighborhood groups, churches, all will celebrate Halloween on a different day than October 31st and we encourage them to do that. And we will share those from city social media when we are notified of when different neighborhoods will trick or treat. But as city leaders, we're not going to change when Halloween is. So next on our agenda is to request permission to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on September the 2nd and the recess meeting on September the 10th.
Seven.
All in favor? Any opposed? Request permission to approve the accounts for all city departments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Ask you to consider the consent agenda with the three additions.
Motion to consider consent agenda with additions.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. And we'll move to our regular agenda. At 4A, request permission to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a purchase order agreement in the amount of $1,353,877 for 75-foot ladder truck for the Oxford Fire Department. Patton?
Yes, ma'am. This is the new truck that we talked about?
Yep.
For the proposed station for the annexation.
All right. Could I have? We included that in our budget this year. Could I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. At 4A1, Chief McCutcheon, I'll invite you to come up and handle the next two items on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Board, I appreciate you guys giving us a few minutes to recognize these individuals. Tonight, we gather to recognize one of the highest callings in our profession, the courage to run towards danger. On August 31st, Officer Mac Hickenbottom embodied everything we believe about the heart of a servant. While our officers were working crowd control on North Lamar, an individual began to fire shots in close proximity of officers in our community. Mac was where he was supposed to be, doing what he was supposed to be doing, not distracted, not complacent, but focused and vigilant. That vigilance is the quiet discipline of our profession, the hours of training, the commitment to being ready for the moment that may come without warning. And when that moment comes, when shots were fired and lives were at risk, Mac did not hesitate. He ran directly toward the gunman. In those few seconds, his training, his focus, and his courage came together. By his actions, he was able to identify the shooter, chase after him, and take him into custody to prevent further tragedy. He did all this while the gunman was still in possession of the weapon and actively firing. We do not know how many lives were spared because of his response, but we know this, his actions made our community safer. This is why tonight we are presenting Officer Hickenbottom with the Medal of Valor. This is not simply a recognition of one act, but it's a symbol of the heart of a first responder. It reminds us all of what first responders across this nation do every day. They stand ready, they run towards danger, and they protect those that they've never met. With this, I'd like to recognize you, Mac, with the Medal of Valor. Congratulations.
Mac, if you want to say anything, you're welcome to. If you'd prefer not to, you're, that's fine too. Thank you, Mac. We appreciate you more than we can tell you.
Mayor, I'm going to ask him to hold real quick.
Okay.
So continuing in that, that thought, you know, a lot of times we, we think about these moments, but we don't think about our dispatchers. And the reality of that moment was, when you go back and you replay that sound, they're in a room across town and they just hear yelling into the radio. They hear shots fired. They don't know what's happening. They don't know what's going on to the officers, also at bar closing, also with calls going on. And the way that this team handled this with precision, with professionalism, you, you would have thought they've done these calls all, all the time. And I can tell you, we don't. And we don't have that happening all the time, thank goodness. But these ladies were exceptional in that moment. You would have, you would have not recognized that many of them probably had been with us not, not too long. We forget sometimes how important they are. You know, we, you see the officers, but they are the backbone to what we do. They are the individuals that take that call in, they get that information, and they push it out. And so with that, we would like to recognize them for the Gold Line Award for their service and excellence that night. Ms. Angie Carlisle?
Thank you.
Ms. Christina? Just, oh, they went to Nashville. Wish I was with her. Ms. Larian Burton? Ms. Jeanne Gonzalez Jones? Ms. Kristi Carlisle? Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. All right. At 4B, I'll ask you to consider the Oxford Utilities Department Electric Division Construction Policy. Rob?
Good evening. Thanks, Mayor. The purpose of this item is to set definitions, expectations, guidelines, and fees for how Oxford Utilities will work with our developers and contractors in our service territory. The last time our fees have been updated is 2005 and you can imagine how equipment, material, and labor fees have increased since then. Coming out of COVID alone, transformers increased 10X in price. We're asking you to consider codifying our policies. And in the past, our policies are verbalized, but we didn't have our policies on paper. We think this is a great way to get everything in writing and share that with all of our developers and also establish a schedule of fees. Our form of schedule of fees was pretty simple. This kind of is in more detail and lays out how developers and people who are requesting service extensions will be essentially treated and how that connection will happen and what they'll have to pay. They'll have to pay for full cost of material, labor, and equipment for developments and subdivisions and commercial properties and things like that. What this essentially will do is instead of subsidizing these developments through our rates and our customers are paying for these larger developments, the developers and the people requesting service will pay for the full cost of that development. So I hope that you kind of understand, and this is just explaining the need for this, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the policy or I take you on a deeper dive or bring up our engineer who's in the audience who can help answer questions as well. I've sent it to Paul for review.
Yeah, and this has been dispersed all board members prior to the meeting. So does anybody have any specific concerns or questions? It's time. All right. If not, then.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We added at 4C, permission to accept the bid proposal for general liability insurance of $589,409 for out bus system. Donna?
This was the only bid that came in with our brokers, which is the same insurance we've had for the last five, six years. We're pretty happy with them, so appreciate the.
Approval.
Approval.
Some more, some more cost of last year.
Yes, it is. Pretty close.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Request permission to approve a parade assembly permit for the UM Athletics Department to have a photo shoot, video shoot on the top floor of the city's downtown parking garage on September the 22nd from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Chief.
Yes, ma'am. No issues with us. We'll, we'll be able to handle that.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Request approval of a final plat for case 3260 MFM Developments JW McCurdy for Colonnade Crossing Subdivision Phase 5 for property located at Claremont Avenue, PPIN 4563. Welcome.
Good afternoon. So this case concerns about 21 acres in Colonnade Crossing. It's located between Claremont Avenue for Endile Boulevard and Hurricane Lane. This request is for a final plat and a single lot subdivision. Proposed lot complies with the dimensional requirements of suburban corridor. The preliminary plat for this site was approved in June 2020 along with the rest of Colonnade Crossing and the Planning Commission approved a site plan for this site in the Trinidad House Development in case 3265 at the September 2025 meeting in the Planning Commission. They considered this item as well at that meeting on September 8th and approved it on the consent agenda with the three conditions listed in the memo. Similarly, we're requesting approval of this plat with the following, with the conditions listed in the memo. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. See if they have any questions for James.
Motion to approve. Sorry.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Request, you doing this one too, James? Okay. Request approval of a preliminary and final plat for case 3261 Landmark Properties LLC, Brian Boyle for Oxford Farm Subdivision Phase 13 for property located at 2665 Oxford Way, PPIN 7984.
Yes, Mayor. This is a little over 27 acres on the south side of Oxford Way. It's across from the Archive Development. The applicant's requesting a single lot subdivision plat in advance of consideration of a site plan, which is under review with staff at the moment. Proposed lot complies with the dimensional requirements of the underlying zoning, which is suburban multifamily. The Planning Commission considered and ultimately recommended this item for approval on its consent agenda at the September meeting. I do want to note, we did receive one letter of concern related to this request. The Planning Commission found that those concerns were more appropriately related to the site plan and so asked that that concern be included at that time. But it has been provided in this packet and will also be considered at the site plan level. We are recommending approval of the requested plat with the conditions listed in the memo. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do they have any questions? Their motion to approve?
So moved. Sorry.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Consider change order number one from BCI, Inc. for the OPC Activity Center Campus Camera System Project. Mark Levy?
So we just received this paperwork this afternoon, like this afternoon. I put a copy at each of your desks for the additional product information for this project. We met on site yesterday and we walked the site to make sure, again, there were no remaining entry points, points that need to be covered. The additional cost for this project is for four, is for the wiring of four more access controls on the old Activity Center building. Initially in the bid, we only had two for the Howell Center as well as check-in equipment and multi-year, these are three-year license for each access control. The total additional cost is $27,340. And so Ash and I met this afternoon. We do have money in the budget to cover this and feel like it's needed for the enhanced security that we're trying to.
No doubt.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Request permission to advertise for bids for the FY 2025-26 Police Vehicle Upfits. Mark?
This is the same thing we did last year. It's a budget item. Again, doesn't bind the board to accepting any bids, just permission to advertise.
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Request approval of a professional services contract with Bearden Riser for the interior renovation of the Oxford Orthopedic Indoor Practice Facility at M Trade Park.
We have a standard AIA owner-architect contract for this renovation. Brad and Clay have been working with architects directly and they formulated the scope. So this is in response to that scope. And a couple of the proposed changes are noted in the documents. I think they're planning on moving the entry to the middle, but it's mostly interior. And so this is a state contract fee. It's a standard fee. I think it's 7.79% of the total budget. So we recommend approval.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? We added at 7D, permission to enter contract with Industrial Frago USA, Inc. for temporary ice skating rink at the Holly Jolly Holidays event.
So this, this item was added at the last boarding, board meeting. Y'all accepted the bid and we've tried to start accepting the bid and accepting the contract. It's two separate items, so we prepared the contract. This is, yeah, $69,500 for the temporary skating rink. That's last, that's less than last year and is well within our budget.
And it's the same company, isn't it?
Same company.
Yeah.
Just by business. We save money.
I believe we approve. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks. Request to accept the low bid, low bids for fiscal year 25-26 annual material bids for the City of Oxford. John?
Yes, ma'am. Each and every fiscal year, we take bids for standard materials that we use year in and year out for the Utilities Department, Environmental Services, Street Public Works, gravel, rock, asphalt. So we're at that point again where we need to approve for next year's budget.
Do they have any questions for John?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Request to accept a low bid for the Fillmore Avenue, South 11th Street, and Lincoln Avenue Drainage Improvement Project. John?
Yes, ma'am. This project is going to replace some real outdated infrastructure over there in that intersection in the older part of town around Fillmore, Lincoln, South 11th. A lot of the pipe is caving in, too small. We're having some real issues with it, so we're going to go in there and just gut it and replace all of it and help fix some problems.
Move. We approve.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Request permission to advertise for the sewer extension at Highway 314 and Gus Booker Road. John?
Yeah. So a few years ago, we put new sewer down Highway 314 and when we came to Anchorage Road, we stopped and went down Anchorage to the creek. That kind of left a, a gap there between Anchorage Road and Gus Booker Road. So what we want to do is just start an existing manhole and extend the line over to Gus Booker Road so the people, the residents along that street can have access to our sewer system. This is in an annexed area from 2018, by the way.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Request permission for the mayor to execute the professional services contracts with Elliot and Brett for the Piggy's Road Extension Project.
Yes, ma'am. Long time coming. This is the project that the state is helping us with. We're asking for reimbursement for engineering and construction, which is why these contracts had to go through MDOT's review process and it took very long. So we finally got permission to proceed. So we're asking to let the mayor sign them.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? We've been waiting for that one for a while. Request to approve change order number one for the College Hill Lift Station Project.
Yeah. So the College Hill Lift Station, it's actually operational now, but what happened was we had, in the process of swapping out the electrical controls, they only, for some reason, had the generator rented for two days, which wasn't long enough to keep the pumps running while they upgraded the electrical controls. It was a football game weekend. We couldn't do without the pumps, so we allowed them to rent the generator for an additional five days, which with fuel and everything, that comes to $20,000 and change.
No choice there.
No choice there, ma'am.
Move. We approve.
Sorry.
All in favor? Any opposed? Request to approve change order number four for the North Lamar Sewer Improvement Project.
So I apologize. It was my intent to actually strike this from the agenda, so I don't know if, if we need to deny that or how we handle.
Do you need a motion at this point to make that change to the agenda or no?
Uh, please.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. We'll skip to 8G. Request to approve change order number eight for the State Road 7 Water and Sewer Relocation Project Phase 2B.
Yeah. So this project was the last one we're waiting on. MDOT is about to turn loose the four-lane project. So these are just final quantities. So these are just final quantity change orders. This project included water and sewer. We're getting reimbursement from MDOT for the water portion of that, so that's why these change orders are separated out, sewer and water. So this is the sanitary, well, I'm getting confused. This is, this is one of them. $10,186 net increase to the contract amount. This is for the water distribution items, final quantity adjustment.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Request to approve change order number nine and final for State Road 7 Water and Sewer Relocations Project Phase 2B.
All right, so this is the sewer change order and it results in a decrease of $124,000 to the total contract amount.
I move. We approve.
Of course you do.
Everybody at once. All right. Second. Is there a second?
Yeah, I did.
All in favor? Any opposed? Request to approve night work for the contractor for the South Lamar Pedestrian Improvements Project.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody with their head not in the sand knows that South Lamar has been a parking lot for the last couple of days. The contractor has agreed and requested to work overnight hours for the duration of that project.
And this is a South Lamar sidewalk.
South Lamar Sidewalk Project between Oxford Way and Belt Boulevard.
This will be connecting Oxford Way to Belt Boulevard down one side of the road.
Yeah, so that, that way we won't be messing with school traffic and all that stuff.
Coffee lines and.
Coffee lines.
Very few residents in that section. I mean, there's, you have someone on the east side. It's really just Harland Drive.
Yeah, Harland, Harland Drive. I mean, there's going to be some noise, but most of it is going to be concrete trucks, just mini excavator running back and forth. I don't think it's going to be too disruptive, but if we get complaints, we'll rethink it.
I'd rather get it done than get the traffic.
Absolutely.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Request permission to close Varner Loop. John?
Yes, ma'am. Varner Loop has been closed for some time now between Rogers Road and Ivy Road in North Lamar. We did a drainage improvements project there late, early this year. With upcoming improvements to North Lamar, we were wanting to redo that entire intersection right there at Ivy and North Lamar and Varner and, which is going to involve complete geometric change. And so what we'd like to do, since it's already been closed, is go ahead and close off that section of Varner between Rogers and Ivy in anticipation of that project coming.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. At 8K, we added permission to seek two appraisals for an easement needed to make necessary improvements to the Howell Loop Lift Station.
Yeah, Howell Loop, there's a really small lift station that's been there for years. It was part of the old Bell Utilities. Very small, will not keep up with the load that's coming to it. So we need to upgrade that lift station and in order to do it according to our standards, we need a little extra easement. So we need to seek a couple of appraisals that we can take to the property owner for that. That's your permission.
All right.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
It's a 50-foot by 50-foot piece of land, by the way, extremely small.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Then I will ask the board to consider an executive session. One more. What? Oh, I added another one. 8L, permission to execute Haley Well. Sorry, John, I forgot you twice in the.
That's, that's okay. So at the last meeting, we signed the task order for Wagner Engineering. This is the actual construction contract. We just got the contracts yesterday, literally. So we'd like for the mayor to go ahead and sign those. You've already approved the low bid. They're ready to get started.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Now I'll ask the board to consider an executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The board will now consider an executive session.